I'd like to call to order the meeting for the town of McCandless for December 13th, 2021. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Swager.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you can hear me now, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our announcements for today, the cardboard box dumpster and basketball courts will be unavailable December 17th through the 20th. They should be back up and running for all your Christmas boxes, though. The police toy drive is also in progress and will be continuing through December 20th. We're taking those collections down in the front lobby of Town Hall. I'd like to remind everyone that council's organizational meeting, which will be the swearing in of the newly elected officials on January 3rd at 8:00 PM. And Winterfest is December 18th, Saturday. Do you want to just say a second of what's going to be on? What people can expect there?
We will be having place closing, the North Allegheny Concert Choir, a little train ride for kids, lights, stories, and music.
Smores?
Smores.
Chocolate?
Hot chocolate, coffee, fireworks.
Okay.
Keep going.
All right. All right, so hopefully you and your neighbors will be able to attend. Item number four, everyone has received minutes from the November 22nd meeting. Were there any adjustments or corrections that needed to be made? Yes, Councilmember Smith?
I do not know exactly how to correct it, but on page seven, where there was the original, the original vote to table the Personnel Committee vote. The original, the original vote was not to table it, but it said that representatives one, two, and five voted against, but three and five voted in favor. So I just don't, I don't.
I didn't understand.
Yeah, thank you.
And on that same motion, I think it was, oh, nevermind, due to abstentions.
Any other changes or corrections that need to be made? We want to wait and see the corrections that are submitted that are the changing of the vote before we accept this. We can do that, we can just wait till next time and accept those minutes. Okay, well, the floor is open if someone would like to accept the minutes as submitted with those corrections. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Smith. Any other corrections? Second chance. Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted with a correction, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a continuation of the public hearing from November 22nd on an application to rezone 10185 through and through 10201 Ferry Highway from R2 to C7. So we were at the point of taking if there are any additional, additional public comments. Is there anyone signed up on the chat? While you're looking, I should have mentioned in announcements that if you would like to speak, put in the chat box your name and your address and what you would like to speak on. You can put the topic there or you can put like 8A or wherever that you would like to speak so that when we call for public comment, we don't miss you. All right? On, for the public hearings on the rezoning? Okay, that, we're not to that yet, that's coming up, okay. But nothing on the public hearing? Okay. All right, hearing none, I will close the public hearing, the vote will be on December 20th. Okay. All right, number six is a review of the pension plan. This is from Manning and Napier. They have a short presentation.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you, I've passed out and provided a very abbreviated report. Be happy to follow up with any questions or any, if anybody wants to learn more detail about how we go about things. But my name is David Ina, I represent Manning and Napier here in Western Pennsylvania. I'm a Marshall Township resident and I've been with the firm for 16 years. We manage about a billion dollars in assets under management in Western Pennsylvania and $22 billion in total across the whole firm and mostly across the United States. Everything's been going great. Like I said, I have an abbreviated report because things have gone very well. We navigated a very difficult year 2020 extremely well, doing what we do well, which is to actively manage the risk of the portfolio such that we were very conservatively and appropriately positioned going into the crisis of the COVID crisis in early 2020 so that we cushioned the downfall considerably. We stepped in and appropriately increased our equity exposure when stocks were on sale in the bear market of March of 2020, April of 2020. And we had to, that helped us ride the recovery very nicely. Then if you see on page, page, the very first page, actually page two of the Police Pension Plan Report. You can see in the middle line that the assets right at the end of March of 2020 were just over 16.10 million. As of close of business on Friday, they were at 22, just over 22 million, so very considerable recovery. And in fact, you know, the downturn was only about 1 million during that first quarter of 2020. So we've, the assets are in very healthy shape. The portfolio is currently positioned about 57% in stocks and 43% in cash and bonds. So it's fairly well balanced right now. We spent most of this past, this current year 2020 slowly but surely reducing our equity exposure as the markets have recovered to a more balanced position, like I said, about 57% equity. That should help us navigate any upcoming volatility if there is any, but if the market continues to move forward, we should be able to capture a good bit of that positive return. If you look on page three of the report, it shows all of our trailing performance periods. And on page four, the more recent ones, I'd like to note that over every period, meta fees, we are ahead of our benchmark, three years, five years, 10 years, and since inception. So like I said, everything's going quite well and all of these numbers are well ahead of your actuarial rate of return assumption, so the, you know, all other things being considered. I don't know all of any of the actuarial changes or changes in your employees that have been happening, but the funding should have been improving all of this time. Just very briefly, the other report is a report on the Non-Uniform Employees Plan. It's more conservatively positioned because since we've set it up, there's always been very high withdrawals on that. In fact, it's only down to, it's down to about $38,000 in assets and about 20% to 25% of that is expected to be paid out in any one year. So it probably should only last a few more years without further funding, but that's, it's only supporting a couple of retirees and that's always been the case. And was, it's built, it's positioned in a portfolio that's much more focused on capital preservation. It's been getting decent returns of seven or eight percent over this time period, but it's, it's in good shape also. We performed so well in 2020 that earlier this year, we were recognized by Baynes in their annual ranking as the number one performing active mutual fund family, I included some information on that ranking in the report on that in the paper show. So with that, I'll close, thank you for your business, thank you for the opportunity to come and meet with you, I don't know that I've had a chance to meet with you since COVID started, so, and there's a lot of new members on council. So I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you. So any questions?
I just, I agree with David real quick. Who picks the options, like what stocks or what bonds or what mutual funds?
We have a staff of over 70 investment professionals mainly in our headquarters in Fairport, New York, just outside of Rochester.
So, the fund, it invests in mutual funds as well. And I noticed that all the mutual funds that the pension is invested in are also Manning and Napier funds. Are you allowed to invest in other mutual funds?
Our approach is to build a comprehensive diversified portfolio where we understand the risks of everything we invest in. So in doing that, we use mutual funds to get access to areas of the market that we feel we can better, get you better diversified exposure through a mutual fund. But the same process and the same analysts are used to buy the stocks within those funds or the bonds in those funds as well. So it is, it is, the funds that we use are proprietary. We invest in a W share class of those funds such that there is no investment management fee collected on those funds. So the fee that you pay is not doubled up for those fund assets and the negotiated fee is 65.65% on the first 10 million, 0.6% on assets over 10 million, and that's what you pay on all the assets, whether they're in individual securities or mutual funds.
So I get that, you know, you guys are professionals and you're doing the right thing, but could, are you, is Manning and Napier allowed to go out and buy another fund, mutual fund?
We do not, no.
Are you allowed?
If the client directed us to and took responsibility, fiduciary responsibility for that, we could select that.
It just seems, if there is tens of thousands of mutual funds, I'm sure you guys are professional, do well, you know, you have awards and stuff, but you always have the top performing funds. And if you, if you would open it up to the thousands that are out there, would it even be better and would it be? That's sort of my question.
Right, and as I tried to explain, I'd like to go, I'd be happy to go into it more depth, but, you know, our approach favors understanding the risks of every investment we make over trying to get the absolute best return, you know, by having, you know, by trying to pick a fund managed by another firm where we don't understand exactly what they own at all times. So the mutual funds that we, the positions in the mutual funds, we know intimately, we know how they coordinate with the other individual securities that we own. And we understand and manage the risk that way. And as you can see, our performance has played out that we do that very well.
And then my final question. How do you coordinate or consult with, we have another company called like Anco or something? What is their role, what is your role?
Right.
How often, if at all, do you discuss things? Who gets to make the call on where the pension is funded?
Yes. Additionally, we've come in with the council once every six months approximately before COVID. I know there's been a lot of, you know, thankfully, our good performances allowed you guys to focus on more important things because there was a lot of things to do in the last two years for you, so. But traditionally, we report on Anco also overseas or we reports on our performance and what they, an independent third party objective, you know, a review of what we're doing and how we're performing versus their universe and versus the risks and objectives of the pension plan here.
So your professionals are picking the funds and stocks, they're just an oversight sort of?
Right, and as an example, we had a short period of underperformance in the mid 20 teens, 2014, 2015. And their oversight and their recommendations to the council during that time was to stay put, have patience. And there were other clients of ours that didn't have that kind of counsel that decided to leave us. And subsequent to that time, we've outperformed by a large margin, so, you know, having that second opinion can be helpful in times when you're not sure about exactly how we're doing, we're not always going to outperform. We try to, we try to position the portfolio as best we can, but it's not always going to work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for your time. Just to help be clear, the next item is public comment on the agenda items. But if you have a comment that is on an item that will be voted on, you will have opportunity to make comment on it after the nomination before the vote. So, but you can make any comment here on any agenda item that you would like. Is there anyone who signed up for general comment agenda items?
No specific, I choose specific items were identified in the request.
Okay.
The book with those items, the motions will be made on those items.
Okay. Okay, all right, perfect. Are there any comments from anyone present? Okay, and if there is none on Zoom, then we will move on to reports for Public Safety Committee.
Okay, first off, we have chief's report. Does anyone, is Lieutenant Basil there, because I believe Ryan's on vacation. So any questions for him?
Are there any questions?
Any other questions, comments? No.
I had a question, Karen. Lieutenant, I don't know if you can talk about this or not, but we had a shooting in our community.
Yes.
And it came, initial reports came out, is there anything that you can add to the public can hear about what the investigation is? Were they McCandless residents? Is there any thoughts on?
From what I was told, it's still under investigation. I mean, I don't know how much I should really say, I guess. I, from what I was told, it's, or maybe we all heard that they were homeless. And so I really don't, you know, I really don't know many details. I believe from what I'd heard, the gun was stolen from a house in Hampton the day before. But no, right now it's still under risk, under investigation.
Anything you want to add, Jeff?
The only thing I can really add is.
Can you, just for the microphone?
As Ms. Swager said, the parties, it was a male and female husband life. They were not McCandless residents, they were staying with the female victim's mother in Hampton. How they ended up at the club at North Hills behind a dumpster, we were still not certain of. We are certain that there was nobody else involved, it was just the two of them. There was no correlation between themselves, the apartment complex, McCandless Crossing, nothing. And we're certain of that, that there is no one else involved. We are waiting for a, I guess, the determination from the coroner, the medical examiner of what actually, who did what. And once we get that done, we'll obviously make that available to all of you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Next up, we have Fire Marshal's report for the month of October 2021 and the Permit Report for November 2021. Any questions, comments about those? Nope. Okay. Number three, it's a code enforcement violation complaint statistics report for the month of November 2021. Any questions, comments? Next is the Personnel Board. We have a meeting on January 19, 2021. We are looking forward to preparing to, hopefully in the near future, near future to hire a new police officer. Guess, is there any other questions, comments about that? Okay, and then how about number five, the Volunteers' Firefighter Steering Committee meeting, which was, I believe, a little over a week ago. Any questions, comments for that? No. Okay. Committee, Police Committee Engagement Ad Hoc Committee. I know Ryan said just to mention that the police will be at the Saturday festivals on the 18th. I also know that Ryan is going to be working, hopefully coming up in February to do a Coffee with Cops event coming up. So that will hopefully stay tuned, we'll hear more details about the near future. Any other, I guess, public comment, questions about public safety? I can't see the room, but I guess there isn't, so. That concludes my report.
Reports from Facilities Management. Mike, come here.
You want to take it?
Hold on just one second. It said there looked like there was a comment there from someone wanting to make a comment on the, at the end of public safety. Do you see that? Can we let her in? Okay, Deb, can you hear us, can you?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, we almost missed you, thank you.
Sorry, it was very late. It was my fault, sorry. I just wanted to comment on the, I read the chief's report and I wanted to give accolades to the chief and the officers. I saw that there were a lot of trainings during the month, I think of November and December, and kudos to them, especially the, I forget exactly which ones, but I know there was some on de-escalating situations and critical incident training and threats. And just thank you so very much for, for providing time for the officers to go through those trainings. They are so critical in the community, so, and the police academy too is well received. And I look forward to maybe participating in one in the future, so thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Anything else pop up? Okay, all right, thank you, all right. Facilities Management, sorry to interrupt you.
The Public Works Activity Report. Here, any questions? Okay. Environmental Advisory Committee.
The minutes are in council's packet, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Technology Committee.
Essentially, everything's pretty much the same with the exception of there'll be another presentation, is it December 16th? Bob, we're going to have a follow-up meeting on the 16th to discuss all of the presentations that we've had for the enterprise software.
That is. Stormwater Management Ad Hoc Committee.
Gateway has completed the work that was approved by council and it's currently in the process of refining and fine tuning so that that information can be shared with council for their further consideration. Bob, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I think we would expect to receive that refinement sometime within the week and we'll get information out to the council as soon as we can. So we have plenty of time to review that.
Any public comment in the room? Any public comments on this? All right, hearing none, Services Committee.
Councilmember Smith, the McCandless Township Sanitary Authority.
The meeting minutes are in your packet. Big thing that happened was they got in the bids for the wastewater treatment plan project. They have not awarded the bid yet, but they have the bids in and will be awarding it shortly. It's all tied together with the, with the bond refinanced, so they have, they have a certain window to accept the bids and that window doesn't expire for long. Any questions?
The McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, the last meeting agenda, minutes from the prior meeting, and I believe it's the financials from October in council's packet. Any questions? Comments? There are none. Again, Councilmember Smith, the Northland Public Library.
Yep, the meeting minutes and I think the most recent minutes and the agenda from the meeting last week are in your packets. I was just making, oh, that's not there. So if there's any questions, please let me know.
None. Are there any public comments on the Services Committee?
Anyone in the room? Anything on Zoom?
That completes our report.
All right. All right, we will proceed to old business. The first motion that you see, A, there is setting the millage for the town as well as adoption of the 2022 calendar budget. Did you want to say anything else? That's probably.
Just one quick thing, Steve, I maybe need a little guidance from you on this. Through some conversations taken place over the last group or so, there's a couple of adjustments that we would propose to make in the Capital Projects Fund. We would propose to reduce the Public Works expenditure by $20,000. The cultural and recreation line item by $35,000, a total of $55,000 in reductions on the expense side. That's going to be total of appropriations to $4,203,760. And then we would have a corresponding reduction in the revenue line item transfers in from prior year fund balance of, that would go from, excuse me, 532 to 477. Bringing that total estimated revenue to $4,203,760. Other change that we would make would be a reduction or an elimination of an item in the projected 2023 budget with corresponding adjustments in the fund balances moving forward. And that would be a $50,000 reduction in 2023. So Steve, with that, can we do a motion to approve the amended?
Yeah, as you described, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so the floor is open for a motion and we will say to adopt the certain appropriations as amended.
Correct.
Okay. Who would like to make that? Okay, Councilmember Smith?
I move to adopt tentatively identified ordinance number 1519, an ordinance setting the real estate tax rate for 2022 at 1.236 mils and other revenue sources and setting certain appropriations as amended and described by town manager Bob Grimm just now for the 2022 calendar year annual budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any? All right, any comments or questions by council members? All right, any comments or questions by anyone in, present in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? All right, then, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Letter B, this is the, the housekeeping item that we address at the end of each fiscal year. This is a reappropriation or amendment of the 2021 budget. The most significant difference in this year's amendment is the fact that we're incorporating funds from the American Rescue Plan into the budget adjustments. So we have been discussing this at public hearing three weeks ago, and throughout the course of the fall, as we are going through other budget items. Certainly open to answering any questions that anybody has at this point, but we have made an adjustment in the in various line items and other the really fact, we did not have to make quite as many as we have in other years. And I also want to give a shout out to the department heads for doing a great job of managing the budgets this year, which actually reduced the we had to do in making the adjustments.
All right, the floor is open for motions. Council member Spunhos.
I move to adopt tentatively identified ordinance number 1520, an ordinance reapproaching certain amounts of money within the general fund and capital improvements program fund 2021 budgets.
Is there a second? Is there any comments or questions from council members? Any comments or questions from the citizens that are present? Anything? Okay, all right, great. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We had a presentation and then we spoke about the Pine Creek property that we were going to be dedicated to the town for floodplain management. So this is the authorization to enter into that agreement. All right. Is there a motion?
I move to authorize the council president and town manager to execute a dedication agreement between the Pine Creek Holdings 2019 LP and the Town and McCandless for property to be used for floodplain and stormwater management purposes.
Second. Okay. Okay, council member Swagger. All right, are there any comments or questions about this?
Just again, it is awesome.
It is awesome. It is awesome.
This is, I would like to point out, although the motion didn't indicate it.
Oh, go ahead.
That the document thoughtfully prepared by our council also provides for trail access should the town ever want to to do something with that land.
That would be this council.
Well, that was thoughtfully suggested.
Everybody's shoulder dislocated? Any other comments from council? All right, comments from citizens that are present? Any comments? Okay, all right, I'm hearing, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Notice of revised minimal municipal obligation for 2022.
This is a short and sweet, this is simply providing notice to the council that we did receive devised figures from our actuary by annual and actuarial study. The good news in this is it reduces our obligation by about $10,000 to $15,000 between the two plans. So it's relatively small change, but it's still significant enough to take advantage of it to save it. So we have the ability in those years when there's an actuarial study to make an adjustment with this minimum municipal obligation calculation. And so we wanted to take advantage of that opportunity.
Do we need any action on this?
No, it's simple. The record will show that it's been submitted to you.
Okay, okay. Any questions on that?
I just have a question on the previous one, real quick.
Okay.
Is the stormwater easement separate?
Yes.
And that'll be?
We, we did, we did.
Okay, that's the one we did the last week.
Last week.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that.
This should be it. This should be the last thing.
Parts, right?
Should be the thing.
The only thing council wants to do is there will be a motion when the deed is actually prepared and ready to be recorded with the county. There's just a few conditions that the developer has to meet before that occurs. And once that occurs, then the, the new council, it will not be by next month. We'll consider that resolution before we can record the deed.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, great. All right, before we move on to the next item, I would like to say that the nominated committee process, like all of our processes, need periodic updating and revisions. So I would like to ask council to please submit any ideas or suggestions that you have to Bob that, that we might use to improve this process. We can look at that and see what, if any, changes needs to be made with that. All right. Having said that, the next item is, is there a motion? Would be to remove from the table, make sure I get all this right, to remove from the table the appointment to the personnel board representative. So is there a motion to remove from the table? Okay, council member Spunhos.
I move to remove from the table the possible appointment to the personnel board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Council member Rappa. All right, are there, there is no discussion with table motions, so we go straight to a vote. All those in favor of removing the tabled appointment to the personnel board indicate by saying aye. I thought on a mo, on a table, there wasn't.
We haven't allowed anybody to.
Tell me what we need to do.
Well, I don't think we were clear enough at the beginning of the meeting that there could be public comment on these two items because they could have been made at the beginning. We said that, that we would allow comment with the public as we went through the bottom.
Okay.
So.
So, so we need to make public.
A motion to remove from the table is debatable. There can be discussion from council. It's just a motion to lay it on the table. There is no debate or discussion with council.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, so are there any comments from any council members on this?
I mean, I would like to point out that the interviews are set to happen this week, so I don't understand how we can make a vote right now when we have not performed the interviews.
I have a question. I guess.
Council member Spunhos.
Council member Swagger, I guess I'm confused. There were interviews and then, and then there's been how many weeks, two or three weeks since the last meeting? So you're re-interviewing, like starting the process over? I'm just, I'm just confused about what's going on here.
Okay, so when Kim gave her dates of availability to Nick, we weren't, I never got to get my dates in because obviously the one date was the night before my reelection. So clearly I was not available. The other night was a Thursday when I had my kids. But anyhow, they went on ahead with Kim's availability and performed these interviews, never once saying, hey, let's look at Carolyn's schedule and see how this works for her too. No, never saying mathically, not, not making sure other people were there for these interviews. So after last week's, well, two weeks ago, whatever was our meeting, I asked that we table this so that I could perform and be a part of these interviews. So we all tabled it. I talked to a few people the next, very next day, even called Steve Corble and started getting the ball rolling. Didn't know Nick Manson's getting married, which he has every right to do. So he, he knew because actually he texted me on his wedding night saying, I got these emails. I understand you're trying to get these booked. So obviously we waited till when he came back from his wedding, which is totally respectful and should be, you know, wait until he's back. We got, we were trying to get everyone, like Mark reports everyone's dates of availability together for these interviews. So I don't understand why we would just push through and not respect our personnel board. The people were trying to be a part of these interviews right now. I mean, if this happened to any of you guys, like, I don't understand why stepping over me to let Kim, the alternate, take over. There was no conversation. This is just not, it's not fair. It's not right.
But weren't the interviews on video? I mean, there were interviews. They were videos.
Yes.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying there were interviews. They were videoed. You, you and whoever else couldn't make it at every opportunity. And I'm just thinking this is being held up for.
No, it's not being held up. You know what? Part of the procedures, Kim should have said, hey, council members, which actually should come from me because it should be based upon, and Kim has always said, go off of the dates that work for you. You're the liaison, but no one cared about my dates. So secondly, if this was the fair process, you guys all should have had the chance to submit your questions for these interviews. Don't, don't you all want to ask some questions here, or is it just off of Kim's questions? That's part of the procedures that's not happened.
Um, that is, that is not, excuse me, council member Spunhos, go ahead. That is, council members can attend these meetings if they want.
Yes, they can.
But the committee is the chair, the assistant or the liaison, the back, the assistant liaison and the chair of the committee. Okay, all right, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna, I was just saying, from my own perspective, I watched the interviews and I thought they were very worthy and appropriate and complete interviews. So therefore I am prepared to vote on this.
And, and I'm gonna piggyback off of that. I too viewed them, and I I'm prepared to take a vote today too, because I did watch them, like anybody else could have watched them.
This is such a joke because if this was any of you guys and someone stepping over your back and not saying, hey, let's make sure we do this fairly and incorporate everyone a part of this process, this is not right.
Council member Tal, did you have, you had your hand up?
When is the seat vacant and what, like, when, is there a, is there a deadline for us to?
The end of the year, the seat will be open.
The, they have to be in by January 10th.
I guess I don't under, I'm sorry, council member Swagger, I, I, I'm not really trying to argue with you. I just don't understand. You, you obviously have your, your mind made up who you would like in this position, and.
You're wrong. I actually don't have my mind made up. I just want a fair process here.
I think.
Go ahead, do the vote. This is great. Let our town see what kind of games you guys are playing. I think that's wonderful. Go ahead, do it. Just, I'll remind every one of you, next year, when your turns come up and people run over you and throw dates out that don't work for you guys. Go ahead. I love this game you guys are playing right now.
Are there any other comments from council?
No.
No. All right, are there any comments from citizens in the room?
Yes.
Please come forward and say your name and your address.
Matt Shipley, 9690 Buckingham Drive. This process has not been carried on as it should have been from the beginning. Council member Swire is the liaison to the personnel board, and she was left out completely when these dates were selected. As in the email that the council president Zachary put out, she sent to Nick Mance, here are my availability dates. And so what did Nick Mance put out? He only put out the dates that Kim Zachary was available. The one, the one paper that I was not available is the date that was selected, and I'm sure Mark Laporte was not, not available that day either. So that she was able to get her, her friend, her ski buddy and her neighbor to appoint it as a subcommittee to make the subcommittee, that hey, he had just been appointed a month or two before. So now we have a person who's only been on the board for a month or two, who's sitting in and gonna select a replacement for the chair, who's been doing an outstanding job, who's the only female on the board, and who's the only person on the board who has personnel board experience, personnel experience, as the description says that it's, it's not required, but certainly an advantage. So I think that you should, as town council, you don't need to rush this. This doesn't have to be done tonight. We have plenty of time. The, yes, the seat becomes vacant by the end of the year, but it doesn't need to be filled to the 10th. You can wait till the next council meeting next year and get this done, give council member Swire the time to do the interviews because if she is the liaison, she should have time to ask the questions. She has questions, and then maybe the questions that the subcommittee formed did not ask the question she would like to ask. So let this process play out. There is no hurry for this at all. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Are there any other comments on Zoom?
Okay. First person who requested is Brian Sullivan, and we make him available.
All right. Brian, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you too. You go ahead with your comment, please.
Yes, I just wanted to emphasize the importance of making a decision on, on the personnel board seat that is opening at the end of this year, and I think it's a really important just thing to fill. Not filling would be just the wrong message. It sounds like there's not really a dispute about the the fact that people agree that it should be filled. And there's a question about the timing. I personally don't see a reason to delay it. There's been plenty of time to for people to do what they need to do up until now, so for their prayers worth. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Yes. Let me restart.
Okay.
It's Christine Shipley.
Ms. Shipley, can you hear us? Ms. Shipley, can you hear us? Do you want to go to another one and then come back to her to see if maybe? Ms. Shipley, can you hear us?
Are there any others? There are no others.
Oh, you, we can't hear you. Are you unmuted? Yes, I'm unmuted.
It's, it's on her end. She's connected to us.
Oh. What, what can I tell her to check?
Just ask her to speak into her microphone because we are picking up noise.
Can you speak into your microphone, please?
Yes, I'm on my microphone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so Amy Werspan, she's a neighbor of mine, and, and I know she works for the United Healthcare Group Parent Company, and she's been in human resource personnel field for over 20 years. Amy volunteers her time on your personnel board. She's been instrumental in providing the expertise on this board. I have to say, I find it very disturbing, and I'm extremely concerned that town council would want to remove the only female and put a male on this board who does not have the same experience as she does. and put a male on this board who does not have the same experience as she does. And remember, Amy has 20 years of experience in this resource, human resource personnel industry. By replacing the only female and putting a male who is leaving town canceled, that seems nefarious to me and it does to a lot of other people. And furthermore, appointing, having the newly appointed member on that board perform the interviews without the vice chair or without councilwoman Swiger, that's nefarious. I, I just don't understand what's going on here. When they wanted to do it, they just couldn't do it on those particular dates. So that's very disturbing. And I, I'm, I'm very concerned. And I think that your actions are not acting in the best interest of police officers. You appear to be operating slyly behind the individuals on this board without consulting them. Just shame on you guys for doing that. You, you wouldn't, why would you do this to a good woman who volunteers her time? She's an expert in the personnel field. She would like to stay on this board. The dynamics of this board work wonderful with Amy. Like I said, 20 years of experience. Please don't kick this woman off the board. Keep on, keep her on the board. And when you do things like this, you're only gonna lose other volunteers in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other Zoom comments on this?
No, there are none.
Okay. All right, hearing none, we have a motion and a second. I'll read this again just because it was a while ago. The motion is to remove from the table the appointment to the personnel board, for the personnel board representative. All right? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Can I get verification or voting on again?
Um, we're untabling this so that we can vote on the, the representative. So this is just to get the subject back out because it was tabled before.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ward four?
I understand.
Ward five? Yes. Ward six?
Nay.
Ward seven?
No, Trish, no. You're muted.
Okay. There you go. I, I vote nay.
Okay, you, so you want to keep it tabled? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, word one, yes. One, two, three. So the motion fails. It remains tabled. Okay, so we will skip the next motion and move on to new business. This is a housekeeping for a resolution establishing the rate of participation of the town to the police pension plan at 5%. Do you want to say anything about that?
This is a, an action that the council takes each year in looking at the contribution rate. The council can choose to reduce the rate. Actually, really, it makes sense. At this point, the pension fund is not 100% funded per the actuarial study. So it's the staff's recommendation to keep the pension contribution at its current rate of 5%, which is the maximum permitted under Act 670.
Okay, all right, the floor is open for motion.
President.
Councilmember Smith?
To adopt tentatively identified resolution 23 of 2021, a resolution establishing the rate of participant contributions of the town and candleless police pension plan at 5% for 20, 2022.
22.
That's why I was paused.
Good job. All right. All right. All right, are there any questions on this? From council? Okay, any questions from anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It varies. Um, the next is a we have to set fees and charges annually and this is the setting of those for 2022. It's the master schedule of various fees and charges.
There's been a few small adjustments just to reflect what are actual costs of none of them are overly significant. To the public.
Okay. Any? Is there, the floor is open for motion. Swannholt?
Motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution 24 of 2021 for the 2022 master schedule of various fees and charges.
Second? Second? Councilmember Taral? All right, are there any comments or questions from council? Comments or questions for anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the resolution establishing the amount of competitive bidding. So according to our charter, anything that is less than one quarter of 1% we don't have to bid on, don't do competitive bid on. Um, and each year, because our budget changes, we have to readapt that to that number. So, and that's what the number one quarter of 1% is the 40,675.
That's correct. And that's slightly lower than the 2021 number.
All right, is there, floor is open for motion. All right, Councilmember Smith?
Trish had her hand up.
Oh, did she? Did?
Yes, I noticed after I raised my.
Oh, okay, all right, go ahead. Councilmember Cloonan, sorry.
Thank you. I move to adopt tentatively identified resolution 25 of 2021, a resolution establishing the amount when competitive bidding shall not be required for contracts for labor, material, supplies or services at up to $40,675 in accordance with section 1301 of the town home rule charter.
For a second? Councilmember Smith, we'll get you on that one. All right, any comments or questions by anyone in council? Okay, anyone who's present, comments or questions on this?
Anyone on Zoom?
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to show this property and talk about it? So Allegheny County has this, we cooperate with Allegheny County and the redevelopment authority of Allegheny County in their vacant property program, and that's what this is about. So a citizen has a vacant property next to theirs and they can apply to this program. We make all the approvals saying, yes, it does comply with all the requirements and then it goes to the county and they kind of take it from there. Is there something else you want, is?
No, I think in this case, as we have seen in other situations, people do express an interest in trying to find to acquire a piece of property that is vacant or whether it's just a vacant land or land and a building. In this case, there's a building on it. But the county started this program in an effort to get properties back on the tax rules, paying rules and improve upon blighted situations. So there is a they're proposing to potentially rehab or demolish the building depending on what the circumstances are once they can get in and take a good hard look at it. But in any case, we get it back on the tax form to, to win for the town.
Okay, the floor, so, oh.
I, I just have a que, I read everything. It's a very interesting program that I'm not familiar with, but the individual who has filled out all the applications is the one who is proposing to rehab it or whatever, and he is the adjacent property owner. So right now, does the county own this property? I mean, there's no indication of who the, there's an owner somewhere. I know that the taxes are delinquent, but I guess I'm just.
The county will acquire the property from.
Whomever owns.
Whomever owns it and then sell that property.
So this is the first step and then this can only happen if the county is successful in acquiring it. Okay, so we don't have to be in the middle of that.
No, we, we simply approve the application.
Right.
The county takes it from there. It goes through a process to clear the tax, any tax liens and other liens and
And it requires a motion from a town, from municipal council
Little action.
in order for the county to start that process. So this may never happen, but.
It may not, but the only way in these cases property owner is not available when it moves through.
Okay, thank you.
We've done like, we've done probably two or three of these before.
It's the first one I remember.
Yeah, it's a great, it's, it's a really good program. It's a good program.
Quick question. I just want to make sure, because in the resolution itself, just the default language is for multiple block and lot numbers. And I just want to make sure this is just one. Okay, because there was an and included in one of the whereas clauses right after the first block number, the only block number. So that's why I wanted to make sure. Uh, but if it's only one, it's fine.
Correct.
Okay, so floor is open for motion. Make a motion. Councilmember Cloonan?
Move to adopt tentatively identified resolution 26 of 2021, approving a vacant property recovery program application.
There a second? Councilmember Swiger, I think I saw your hand go up, but I didn't hear you. Did you second that?
I was muted and they didn't.
Did you, did you second that?
Yeah.
Okay, there has been a motion second. Any additional questions? From council? Any questions or comments from anyone present? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Bob interviewed several people, a lot of super qualified people that wanted to, to be our fire marshal. And seems like it came down to one.
Yes.
Is he, he's not here.
No.
I thought maybe he might be here. We can say hi.
Yeah. Make sure that he is. The the fire chiefs and I, along with a number of different staff members, conducted two series of interviews for fire marshal. And as a result of that process, the recommendation is to hire Jeffrey Weisner as the new fire marshal to replace Dan Stack. Jeff is currently the fire marshal and code officer in Bellevue. Has 19 years of experience in various functions within Bellevue as a firefighter, as a fire marshal, code officer. He was interested in this position because he would allow him to focus a lot more on the fire marshal side of things and not spend his time up quite as much. I will say that his interviews were consistent between the first round and the second round of interviews and he has a lot of great ideas moving forward with training and public education. So we'd be lucky to have.
All right, with that recommendation, the floor is open for a motion to appoint Jeffrey Weisner as our new fire chief.
Motion to appoint Jeffrey Weisner as fire marshal.
Okay, Councilmember Smith? Are there any comments or questions?
Wouldn't like to thank fire chiefs, their participation is a great process. I have a lot of insight and they put a lot of time and effort into the process and I appreciate that.
Um, are there any comments? From anyone present? Any comments on Zoom? All right, hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, motion carries. We have a new fire marshal. Great, congratulations, Jeffrey. All right, so we have, this is supposed to say non-agenda public comment on it, since we've had time to comment on everything on the agenda. So is there anyone that has any comments that they would like to make that are non-related to the agenda? Okay, anyone on Zoom? Anyone left on Zoom? Wants to say anything? Okay, all right. All right, hearing none is, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, we will be going into executive session to discuss personnel matters. There will not be any further business this evening. So is there a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Smith, second?
Second.
Councilmember Taral, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, meaning it's adjourned.